I do have one announcement. Uh, we have been, oh, wait.
What agenda?
Oh, missed it again. Thank you, okay, thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can go to announcements. I do have one announcement and that's the only announcement awarded, the C-DOT in, what is it, improving our street.
Oh, good. Yeah, they can do, C-DOT can do, um, uh, street, oh gosh, revitalization.
Right, yeah, revitalization. So, I wanted to ask the board, um, we have talked about in the past of how to put on the agenda and decide whether we will accept the grant or not. Do you want to do that in this case or shall we just take it? Yeah, sure.
Is there any draft to the town to take the grant? Any matching from the department?
There's a ten percent actually done through, um, actual work and not dollars.
So, it's all in time?
Yeah.
Okay.
And all reimbursable, nothing up front.
Right. Yeah.
I move to accept the grant.
All right.
Second?
All here. Aye. Okay, opposed? All right, we got the grant. Thank you, everybody. So, the next thing on the, um, agenda is recognition of visitors and guests. And I'm gonna slip them and swap them, and I'm gonna use the shop, state shop local to look first. And so, we have several people here again. This is something we are doing to recognize those businesses that are stepping up to keep our citizens safe by adhering to the governor's orders. And so, who we have here today is United Business Bank. And there is your certificate, thank you so much. Yes, two individual. Okay, I want a picture of me handing her the thing, or your certificate. All right, that's our agenda. Burg Harvest. And Blue Sage, Senator of the Arts. There it is. You're welcome very much, Julie. Now, I know, we get them now. And Crystal Yai.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And then, who's not a supporter of this Colorado? Being an employee, proud of the board, not good with that. All right. The other way that was leading for children is the Lily Farm Cafe. So, thank you all for your efforts to help the town. And if you know of anybody who you see out there that is ensuring for the rules and doing the hard stuff to keep us safe, please call us, and we'll be right back to this all. Thank you so much.
I say a few words. Thank you very much for the award. And, uh, I'm on the board of Blue Sage, and we have been trying for many, many years now to make it the mainstay of local culture and, uh, within the U.S. Valley. And of course, because of the COVID-19, and you were followed, but this one is very important to us, and so, thank you very much. And we will continue to do our very best to make sure our win is, will be part of our plan.
All right, the next item will be visitors and guests. Now, I am reinstating some protocols that I have allowed the last over the passing evening. And so, visitors and guests are allowed to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. There is a five-minute limit on time allotted, and that you can ask questions, but we are not going to respond or engage at all. If there is a response to be given, then it will either be done via, you know, personal contact with the person speaking, or it will be addressed at the next meeting. But we're not going to let your ideas and your worries drop off the agenda. We will address it. And you can only speak once, so you get five minutes left, if you can't get up and do anything. All right, and I hope that this will help things go a little better, guys. All right. Anyone want to address an issue that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none.
David.
I may have could have pulled out a tire. All right. So, next on the agenda is staff report. Let's start with the administrative report. Corita.
First of all, apologies. We, something, our, our cooling system is off. Obviously, I'm not open in this room today. Um, I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but we'll look into that later. Um, uh, first thing I, I do want to just point out and say well done to, um, the users of the town water. Uh, they, the confirmation effort is, has working, it's shown a tremendous, um, relief to the water system, and really goes well for our community that they're willing to, um, voluntarily restrict their water use in such a significant way. I can tell you prior to putting in, uh, the Ask the Voluntary, uh, Restriction Act, I did some research, and statistically, a voluntary ask only has about a five percent effective rate, only about five percent of people actually respond. And you tend to get a better, uh, statistically, a better response when you put mandatory action with a punitive response that you don't adhere. And, um, I just really think it's a testament to our community that a voluntary ask has such a significant impact on the water use. And so, that has significantly, uh, changed the direction of where I anticipated the conversation would go tonight when we began to discuss the resolution about water conservation. Next thing, Blue Sage. I wanted to let the board know that Blue Sage is experimenting a request to elevate fiber for the donation of Wi-Fi access to town parks. Uh, they're specifically looking at the new devote area, uh, and really anticipate that that will help facilitate outdoor events and activities, especially, um, while we're moving through this new universe of COVID that we're moving through. Uh, so, we really appreciate that effort from Blue Sage, and I've, um, offered Deborah any assistance that I can provide her as she's moving through that request. And Cindy and I are currently reviewing the employee retirement plan and anticipate a proposal to update our plan carrier, um, virtually at the next meeting, which we had in future meetings very soon. Uh, on the same note, uh, Mayor Mary and I met with Charter Communications today, and we will be bringing forward a franchise agreement update in the upcoming months. Uh, that draft will be supplied to myself and to our town attorney for review, uh, and once it works out, or through those details, that'll be coming before the board. Um, not so, actually, and on the not breakers, I should end with the water. Um, our, when now, we're still at two cases to date, one in South Street area and one in the North Fort Valley. And the COVID positive case count to date is at a hundred and forty. And unfortunately, I have to, um, let everyone know that we did not recite the death reported late this afternoon. So, we have, um, two loss of life and a hundred and forty positive or presumptive positive for Delta County. And, um, I did bring up one. Uh, One Delta County had its official meeting last night, at which time they, uh, voted to speak their board of directors, their neighborhood development participants, their service providers, and their local government participants. So, the business directors for One Delta County are Michelle Livingston with Delta Healthcare and Sunshine Farm, Deborah Schaefer, Grand Vista Arts and Dance Center, Portia Neal with U of Mortgage, Gary Peebles with Home State Meet, Glenn Williams, Sam Long with East Supply, Rob Turner from Lake of Colorado, and Arnold David Jacobson with David Jacobson Professional Media. And that's all.
Okay, any questions from the board yet?
I just want to say thanks for being proactive on the water situation. Um, that was a huge help for the town, and I appreciate that, and for the board too, to get the data. Um, and then, I also just had a question on One Delta County, is, uh, those board members, and is everything getting put together? Do they have a website, or does that information publicly available somewhere?
They are establishing, they will, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Go.
Good news on the water, but what is the tank level right now?
Tank levels are just over twenty feet.
And Dave?
Well, I'm probably gonna run into some of the citizens that brought the issues about the street lights up, the ones that are, like, they used to be off and now they're on. And I'm curious about what the decision made process is.
Apologies. Uh, we, I have received, and we've been communicating back and forth about, um, establishing a checklist of how the lights will be evaluated and how the determination will be made on, uh, whether or not they should stay in place, or whether, or if they should be, um, removed or potentially replaced, and we will get other options. Um, my, at this point, uh, what I anticipate is that I was gonna respond back with, uh, the suggestions that I had to that checklist, make sure that Dark Sky is also in agreement with the suggestion, and then bring that to the board, and we'll use that checklist then to start facilitating a little individual conversation.
I think it'd be important for those citizens to know what board means, and how to deal with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, during that, anything from the public? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the boards. Rob?
Good evening. Um, the last couple weeks and stuff, I've been working a lot on the water system, making sure that we don't have any leaks on our system. Um, there was three recordings that they were on consecutive systems of ours, um, and the water companies.
Can you use a microphone?
Oh. I don't think these things might need.
It's not too far away.
It's not too far away. Sorry. There was three water leaks on consecutive systems, and all those have been repaired. Um, they actually got on them really fast, as soon as they were found, was really glad for that. Um, we are starting by beginning pipe up under the spring line to get that, um, last spring line repaired. Um, we started pumping pipe up there today. Um, should get the rest of the pipe up there tomorrow, and hopefully by the end of the week have that line completely done. Have been, um, dealing with Brandon with SGM on our mapping system, and it's going very well. He's actually gonna be up here next week to do training in, um, red lines on the mapping for the water answerer off the poles. My new employee, I think, is doing a great job of trying to get the parts back in order from what they were. Um, he's really ambitious on the parts and stuff, and I do appreciate it. And then, my other crew, they've been working on getting the street spread. Um, the county should be here in the next couple weeks to do, um, street work, so we're just trying to get ready for the events to get here. And that's all I have on us, anybody?
All right, questions from the board?
Oh, I'm sorry. We are gonna be doing some alley work, um, cleaning up, um, branches, trees that are hanging over, different trash trucks and stuff, so we will be doing a lot of that work in the alleys and stuff, too.
Okay, thank you. All right, Michelle.
When you said, "street work that that county is doing," what streets would that include?
Um, that's gonna be a patch on Orchard, a patch on Main Street, um, two patches on Third Street, or two patches on Second Street, the two hundred block of doors is gonna get overlaid, and the one hundred block of parkways gonna get paved.
Any other, any other questions from the board? Yeah.
Can you give us an update? Can you give us an update on the Main Street ditch repair status? Has, um, has a letter been drafted by Bo, that you're aware of? And also, uh, do you have an estimate on when the right pipe will be arriving?
Um, we did get two loads of pipe, um, yesterday, of the right-sized pipe, um, anticipating the rest of it to be here this week. Um, we're just lacking two joints of pipe right now. I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm pretty confident about the letter for, with Bo, because she's really dealing with that. And, um, if we, the pipe shows up, I anticipated trying to be able to do that project next week.
So, sometimes, depending on circumstance, it delays the completion of the letter, but Bo and I have a call tomorrow to finalize the letter, and it's going out tomorrow.
Okay.
And then, another question, and what's the situation on the bulk, um, bulk water system?
Is it still down?
It is still down. Um, I was actually working on it today before we had a contractor hit a water main that I ended up having to work on, so I have the work, I haven't had a chance to look at it real in depth to see if I can get it fixed.
And I'm curious, when that's down, I just might be referring, when that, uh, bulk water is down, is that what's on the website and on social media?
No, that's not something that I typically, uh, put out there, but I can.
Yeah, I just think, since the public kind of relies on it, like, there was just an update on it, and it was, like, when it's back up, or when it does go down?
I can do that.
About to do it.
Any other? Yeah, Dave.
I'm wondering, it'd be helpful for me to also, members, I have never seen sort treatment plans, I've never seen the springs, and I've never seen a lot of treatment plans. At some point, I got a tour, so I know what I'm helping with. So, if the staff could please arrange for that at some point, and maybe members of the public might wanna go with us, but, you know, it's really hard to sign these checks and write all these big numbers down for things that I just can't visualize, and I'm a visual person, so that would really give up on me.
So, that is, I'm happy to report that I've been talking with Travis the last few months about, we're actually going to schedule a staff and board and public field trip to go. We're just waiting for some repairs that are being done to be finished along the plan. This is what we take over, to take it all.
Michelle.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I think, um, talk a little bit about what happened with the trash truck recently? There was a, it looked like it was taken for service or something.
Yeah, trash truck actually had taken for repair. Sometime, I was sitting at the shop, and there are fuel tanks full of sand, or sawdust or something. So, they ended up having to drain the, drain all the fuel tanks, um, wash them out, put in chill filters on them, and install locking fuel caps on it. And part of that was until they get it down there, which is not, it wasn't, wasn't totally working.
And then, usually, and, do we have any idea if that was delicious?
I do.
What?
The monkey wrench came, came to mind. I thought you had the right, the monkey wrench.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. And have the police with me to there?
I, it's the only vehicle that I've seen it, we checked all the rest of them, um, and that's the only one that happened, was that. So, I don't, if it was delicious, or some kids messed around and figured out that that gas cap was easy to take off.
Yeah.
It's the recycling antifa.
Yeah.
Uh, could we consider locking gas caps on those things, and also, do you have camera surveillance in that area?
I do not have camera surveillance, but, um, Corinne and I have also talked about doing some cameras.
I think this area, getting it on that, it's pretty small, I don't think it should get it.
And locking gas cap limits, no?
Yeah, locking.
Oh, you're right, okay.
Anything else from the board? Okay, and, but.
Where did that hap, where did that happen? At my shop. At the shop over here. Yeah, next door, far away.
All right. All right, then let's move on to the police. Chief Burson is not here tonight, but if anyone has questions, I will try and answer them. Nope? Okay. Uh, Bo is not here, so your attorney's report. All right, Bo's not here. Oh!
That's due. Unfortunately, it may be hard to hear, I might have to do some inter, legal interpretation. He is, he is present.
All right. What do you want to say, Bo?
Hey, guys, I'm sorry I can't be there in person this evening, I didn't have a question for you, so, uh, set a date, you're not called.
So, with that, are there any questions about mine for board?
Does it include an address?
No, I didn't.
I, I did look over, um, at least the recent billing, wiped away our attorney who's broken it out by issue, whether he's working on meetings, or whether he's working on this lawsuit or that lawsuit. And if any of the members of the board or public want to look at the invoices, uh, our committee meets tomorrow morning at nine thirty here at Town Hall, when we sign check, nine fifteen, sorry.
And any questions for Bo?
Um, I just want to clarify that the amounts of the invoices are bubbling, that information is going to the board, but the invoices themselves do contain, uh, are contained by information, so we want to see it for us, uh, if we're disclosing the actual bills.
And Bo, did you send that report via email to the board members? So, no? Okay, well, it didn't end up happening.
Sorry. It's attached to my, I don't understand, does this happen to Bo? It's not personal. It was an update on the, uh, the, uh, different projects that he's been working on, this continuation of that, so I will send that out under a separate email as soon as we move on to the end.
I'm, I'm happy to take it into my own hands and distribute it, uh, because it seems to me that, um, it might be an issue.
Sorry, your connection's breaking.
Well, I guess we're just gonna have to let you go, Bo. Thank you. All right, next up is our treasurer's report. Rob?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We reviewed payroll and dispersments, and released the payroll direct deposit. The review with the Finance and Personnel Committee are fun balances and all reconciled. I attended a meeting with our finance director and our auditor that addressed the audit findings of the FPPA financial statement prep, and I'm really pleased to report to the board that our auditor is providing that value-added assistance that they indicated in their engagement letter. I know Cindy appreciated it. Lastly, uh, you already know, I prepared submitted the treasurer's letter for the board and staff for the 2021 budget, and that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for our treasurer or pressure king? No? Okay, and let's move on with dispersment. Do we have a motion for dispersment?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I approve the refreshment of seventy-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, twenty-three cents for a tax payable, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars for tuition transfers payable, in addition to one thousand, one ninety-eight oh three for payroll and payroll taxes of seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-two cents, and payroll direct deposit of seventeen thousand, nine eighty-three forty-two.
Okay, you have a second on that. Questions? Yes?
I had several questions, so. I'll find Fincie.
One or two, yes.
At which plant? At, at which plant was the Fincie done?
Yes, um, the repairs to the one with the two million spence and repair at the water drink line.
I thought we'd done that, we fought other one lane government tank in the past, did it shot damage?
Was it the two?
The two million.
M-Tech?
M-Tech was, um, the first one is a sewer area repair, a five horsepower, the second one is a twenty horsepower sewer area repair, and the third one is a, um, compressor motor for the water drinking pump.
Just, that second one for almost ten thousand dollars, is that, uh, what does the new one cost?
About thirty-six thousand.
Transport truck?
Transport truck was a sewer, or, uh, I'm sorry, the trash truck repair.
Okay, and the, and the triple bills?
The first one is the sewer line repair on Minnesota Creek, the fitted project, and then the second one is, um, all our concrete and rock that we helped, or haul down to the sewer plants from numerous street projects and asphalt and stuff, was crushed, crushed up, so we can use it for basement, very old, on some of our street projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Joe State?
Well, it's a lot better when our public looks after, describes the expenditures, and Ken and I try to model our way through it, so thank you, Travis.
All right, yes, Michelle.
I just had a couple, uh, CW diapers?
That is my tank inspections.
Do they actually dye the things?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and, uh, Denmark service?
That is our temporary employee.
Is that, is that a public work employee?
Yeah, that's the, maybe I got, got running apartments.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else? Not seeing anything? Anything from the public? Not seeing anything? Thank you very much, Travis. All right, let's move, oh, we have to vote. So, we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, new business. First thing on the agenda is the public hearing on the beer and wine liquor. So, I'm going to open the hearing. This is for a beer and wine liquor license application for Burg Harvest LLC, DVA Burg Harvest Brewing Tower. Corinne, do you have a presentation on this?
Apologies, I'm trying to set a vote to, so that he can hear better. Um, so, um, the only thing I would provide the board is that the, um, application was being completed and submitted with all of the permit attachments, and, um, there is no issue noted on, uh, the town administration side, or from the police department with the application in the morning.
Okay. Warren, do you like to say anything to the board on this?
Uh, sure, thank you. Uh, yeah, I really appreciate you entertaining this request. Um, we've talked about it long and hard, and wanted to proceed with just beer and wine, uh, initially. A lot of it is to try and, um, utilize our facility the best we can, and sort of beer and wine, we've had requests from many of our patrons who want to come and have a little bit of pizza. Um, we do not want to ever move into a cool bar scenario, uh, we don't want to be a sports bar, we won't be putting a TV on the mall, uh, probably will not be doing anything on tap, this would just be simple bottle beers, uh, and also some local wine, so we're very much also working with the local Colorado beer and wine culture, uh, but we're also, of course, looking to not only satisfy our customers, but try and keep, uh, our store open as long as we can through the fall, um, so it will just help our bottom line, and I think help our customers enjoying their evening meals as well. So, that was really good, because, um, we talked about it with our family extensively, there were people who were really interested in changing our family ice cream kind of persona that, um, I feel that limitations we're putting, or we do not like to serve our alcohol, we do not want to be a bar, um, we feel that it will benefit us and the community as well.
Thank you, Warren. Do we have questions from the board? Yes, Dave.
Of course, I appreciate the rest of the customers that were in favor of it. Um, I was wondering if you're gonna restrict the hours at all, um, you know, because I know you're open very early.
Um, we haven't really talked about that, we were thinking of doing it just in the evening, um... Which, of course, right now we're building at six o'clock Tuesday month and Thursday, so we might have to shift our hours back. Frankly, our breakfast business is really falling off. Once school starts, we shift more into evening hours. So we're not quite sure exactly what it's going to do to our hours or if we're going to serve for lunch. I don't know if there's any restrictions on the time of day when serving alcohol.
There are restrictions in the evening hours and under the current executive order restrictions is that it's only, I believe, on Thursday at seven AM. So it's not substantial.
And I believe that it's eleven PM and that bars have to close, so.
Right. Right.
Thank you. Other question? No, seeing none. All right, the next portion is public comment. The rules for public comment. Each speaker can have three minutes. Speaker shall come forward to the podium or stand up and identify themselves by name and address. Repetitious comments will not be acceptable if a previous speaker has already made a point and they simply come forward and state to recur. No public demonstrations of any kind, applause, or derisive behavior. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing none, then I am going to close the hearing. And open deliberation above the trustee. Any comments?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, go.
Hey, I move that we approve the beer and wine liquor license application for Berg Harvest LLC, DVA Berg Harvest Brewing Field as a permit.
Do you hear a second?
Okay.
All, any discussion, further discussion? Nope, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Congratulations. Warren, again, we look forward to being able to go to beer and liquor. All right, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to resolution twenty twenty fifteen, local disaster declaration extension. We have, I know Corinne and I talked about this, and it is considering the state repairs and the fact that we can still get COVID, we can still get reversed COVID expenses through the end of the year. So we go ahead and continue our disaster declaration until the end of the year so that we can repoor any expenses that we have. Because we can only get for as long as we're in our disaster. Andy, would you like to add anything to that, Corinne?
No, well, that sums it up. The only part that wasn't listed in the agenda either, we can bring that forward, the agenda items the board likes to have a detailed conversation is, again, the continuance of of waiving of fees, specifically late fees, and also the continuance of not just extending services in an attempt to collect funds. I've done a cursory look. I can't give you that total in a comparison. But we do have a substantial number of accounts that are getting precariously high. And a perspective that was brought to me recently that I hadn't thought of in an effort to assist people who are dealing with some difficulty. Something we've been remiss to discuss is that ultimately a property owner is responsible for a debt on their property. And a lot of these are tenants, that bills are really, are very substantial, well outside of what we typically would allow our team to make arrangements with. And so that's something I want the board to be aware of, again, especially when we start talking about the only mechanism that the town currently uses to collect debt is through replacement of liens on property. And so, again, that goes to the property owner, not the tenants, and is collected through sales tax or property tax mechanisms to the town. So I want the board to be aware of that and it may be proved with a next agenda for a deeper discussion.
Someone like to make a motion for that, Seth?
I move that we put the fee issue on the next agenda.
Is that your second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it will be on the next agenda. All right, any more discussion on extending the local disaster deal bill?
I just had one question on that. Do you know a part of the landlord? Do you see the power handle?
Yes, we still send out the disconnect notices to the property owner and the tenants every month so that they have a running total of where they're standing with their bills.
And Karen?
I just wondered if one had to do with the other, I mean, extend the declaration of the tax. Are those, are those the things tied to that extension?
No.
No, yeah, we need to make a determination on whether we should double it. Any other guests here?
I think we'll look for the next meeting if we can see exactly the dollar amount and numbers in there. I'm not trying to expose individual property owners, but like property A was this much, property B was this much. So we can kind of see them running tally the number and how big a debt it is, because I have no idea right now. And that's how we make a decision.
And one item I can include, I think, would be the most helpful, instead of trying to break it down each on a individual account, is I can give you a comparison of our agent report where we were at last year. With accounts that were sixty, ninety, or one hundred and twenty, they were anything to a total in comparison to where we're at now.
Yeah, that might be awful, but still, I like to see the detail. I guess I'm going down a lot on this, but, you know, I'm thinking of people that are renting that are really strapped, that may have been in the restaurant or the bar industry, and they haven't been employed for a really long time. So I just like to see that kind of thing. But I do really appreciate Corinne that you kept this on the table, because we forgot a lot, a lot of the vote, and it's back on and you remember, and.
Cindy?
I just want to remind you that the majority of those people are collecting unemployment with extra benefits.
How do you hear that?
They are collecting unemployment with extra benefits.
Not now.
They were, up until, up until.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, did I get a motion to accept twenty twenty fifteen?
I'll move that we pass resolution twenty twenty fifteen, extending the local declaration until some reverse issues.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, next is resolution twenty twenty seventeen, ratifying town to young water conservation and management plan. Corinne, would you like to briefly talk about this?
Okay, so one of the things Travis and I have been talking about actually over the last couple months, really trying to move to a place where we administratively and presenting to the board and trying to get a little bit more proactive than reactive. Something we've been discussing was what kind of conservation and management plan would be put into place? What trigger mechanisms would say, hey, what can we start? We need to be a little bit more diligent in conservation and getting that message out, okay, what's the next level? And so this was something we actually intended to bring to the board at the first board meeting of the month, prior to seeing, having any kind of significant drop in our water production. But we chose to wait until we met in person to do that, so we could start that conversation. And of course, over the last couple weeks, we noticed the trend that the tank was dropping because we were pulling more water and more water was being used than what was being produced and served to the two million from the spring. So we, again, went back to our conversation of what we thought those trigger mechanisms should be, and that's what's in front of you. Also, through some research, I did find where in two thousand and two, the board trustees adopted an ordinance, putting, basically stating that the board had the authority to establish restrictions and what the penalties would be if the restrictions weren't adhered to. In conversation with our town attorney, we do believe it would be most prudent to revisit that and bring it back to the board for an updated discussion. Especially since, I don't know what the reason was, but that ordinance was not included in our original or updated classification from it. So that will be coming at a future date in tandem with the stage three notation about establishing a water waste ordinance. So what we have in front of you is our management plan, stage one, stage two, stage three. We're in a hybrid right now. The voluntary restriction really isn't either one of these stages. It's a combination, the stage one and the stage two. But we identified what we consider to be stage one, which is a voluntary restriction. And that's when we believe is evident that we are going to have to start diverting water from our secondary water source, which is feed or dam ditch, or it's also going to have.
Lake Fork.
Lake Fork. I can never remember that. Lake Fork Spring. We are currently diverting water into the system now. But in a future situation that's not active, we would consider stage one occurring at that point, and we see, okay, we're going to have to start diverting from our secondary water source. And then, of course, I provided what actions would be requested during a voluntary restriction. Stage three is, stage two is a modified mandatory restriction, and that's when our demand is still exceeding our system capacity. We're not filling excess water at our treatment plant, treatment plant at that point. And again, it goes into how we restrict watering and how we would address that situation on town property that's being watered or benefits being maintained by any type of potable water instead of dipped water. Stage three is when things are getting really serious, and this is our mandatory restriction, where our demand is still above this still capacity. Our levels are not being sustained, and we've been in stage one and stage two. And that is when things get a little bit more serious. Initially, when Travis and I were speaking in the annual last week, we anticipated, and as I shared with the board when I sent out this draft and published, that we may be requesting the board to adopt and immediately go into stage three. And again, and kudos to all the users on the town who give you water, that's not something that we feel that we need to do. We actually don't believe we need to enter any direct stage in a state within our voluntary restriction act, which is working well right now for the town. But that stage three does include, the second bullet is the water waste ordinance activated, which includes emergency rate structure. And basically what that is, is a favorite conversation at the board level on if we were really in a situation where we needed to substantially reduce water, what kind of cost association with our higher water users could be put in place temporarily in order to really strongly encourage them to reduce their water use. So I think that enough talk, and I hope there's a question.
Hey, any questions for Corinne? Yes, Karen?
So right now, are you suggesting that we're still in the voluntary thing, and there's no guideline?
Yes.
Okay.
And Dave?
It was a little confusing when I read this, because I liked the way on stage three you said maintain water in stage two plus. But on stage two, you didn't say that, so it isn't really clear that on stage two, the stage one is still. So just that statement, I think it helps people understand that it's one and.
I feel.
I wanted to clarify that, you know, earlier in the evening, you indicated that the tank levels were increasing and that we were at twenty feet now. But tonight, we heard that you are diverting water from the Lake Fork to the tanks. And I was curious to know if the increase in tank levels would result with the other spring being brought in or a reduction in use?
It's a reduction in use. Lake Fork was actually brought, we were already diverting Lake Fork water before we put the voluntary in. Yeah, we were, we were already collecting that water before we even implemented the voluntary restriction.
Okay, any other questions? Or just, yes, Michelle.
Just one, in stage one restrictions, there's a section where it says no irrigation with windy. Maybe just a little more clarification of what we consider to be windy, is that a red flag day or is that an hour one? But otherwise, I think this is extremely clear and will follow. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I would just like to make a comment, and I know in the time that I'm on the board, we have circled around this and have never jumped on it and done anything about it. And so I really commend Corinne and Travis for putting this together, finally, let's get something that we can have some quantification on. All right, is there any one from the public? Yes, I was just wondering about sort of where the conversation about development and growth goes with this, like, who determines that? Is that going to be part of that engineering study? Is that going to be?
Yes, I anticipate that that's a larger conversation and definitely believed we had at the time that we received that, the infrastructure analysis in our asset inventory. More the infrastructure analysis with the mapping component from the asset inventory. Because those are going to be outside independent people who are really going to give us a good idea of where we're at, what we can service with, with the system infrastructure we have right now. And what the recommendations such as raw water storage, which is a big one, we're on Travis' radar, moving forward so that we have the capacity to collect the water that we lose. Because we're in that situation right now where we're asking for voluntary restrictions. Our water use is high and all our production is low. We're operating the two million. And we know that early in the year and throughout the early months and later in the year, we spilled a lot of water. And so looking at that raw water collection is really, that is a big ticket that's going to make the difference, and it'll be part of that conversation about future development.
Okay, any other? Yes, Karen?
You talked about that situation where unemployed tenants are not paying their water bills. And the only enforcement you have is to have through property liens on the property owner. You can still turn the water off in that case, right? You can just turn off the tenant's water.
Yes, but then direction of the board not to disconnect services due to non-pay because of the pandemic.
I see. Thank you.
Any one else? Okay, seeing none. Can we get a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty sixteen?
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty seventeen.
Okay. I believe it's sixteen. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. I'm sorry.
We have a problem with town, up going to water conservation and management plan.
Okay. Do you have any?
Yes, elevated.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, on to resolution twenty twenty sixteen, marijuana ballot heighters. So we have the reliable language that we looked at last time. And hopefully this is correct and clear, and we know that's what we're doing. Anybody have any questions or comments about this new resolution? Yeah.
I don't have any questions or comments, but I did want just to ask the board if they could do the correct objective. So I know that it's difficult to hear on Zoom, and if there's any specific logistical questions based on any of the modifications that Bo made, we'll make sure he can hear you.
Okay. Question? There? Yeah, Bill, I'm Dave.
You can call me Bill.
But then, yes, please.
I consider it a compliment. The, I'm still really disturbed about two thousand and eleven. And I'm still very disturbed about the fact that there's a sunset clause in the law for tacos. So what I said last meeting and what I said tonight is still stands. I think we're making a mistake by having two separate dollar initiatives, and I think we're making a mistake by letting our voters know this could go piling into the general fund in just five years. So I just wanted to make that comment. That's my position.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Others? Anything for, oh, yeah, Kim?
Yeah, I like the justice categories for time of this. It's unfortunate that the county in their language plan, in my opinion, says no junk yards, no junk and no marijuana rows. And I think that's unfortunate because we won't be able to, the community won't be able to supply locally grown pot, and I think that's very unfortunate. Just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, anything for the public? All right, hearing's done. Can we have a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty fifteen? Can we have a motion to accept resolution 202015? Okay, you have a second?
I have a second.
Any from the district? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Did you get that now, or do you need a roll call?
I'll do a roll.
Okay.
Tracy, Gary? Tracy, Linda? Tracy, Duncan?
Aye.
Tracy, Linda?
Nate.
Tracy, Max?
Aye.
Tracy, Hudson?
Aye.
All right, we have majority in that. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, onward to ordinance 2022, be determined creation of a water advisory committee. I know Bill and Tim, you have been working on this. I know we've discussed it for a long time. You guys reviewed this in public works recently, and I'm assuming all the changes are part of your discussion?
Well, I don't know if the changes got me. I'm glad the changes did get me. And I have a question, or especially people on the tree board. Does this language pretty much mirror what the tree board does?
I did look at that, and it's, it's close. You know, the tree board originally was an advisory board, but they also provide recommendations. They were part of more than the decision-making process, and that was really uncomfortable I didn't actually sit down and side by side and apologize for that and look at it, but it's very similar to how the tree board is now, as opposed to the original tree board.
Well, thank you, Ladia. I certainly don't oppose an advisory committee. I'd like to see that the language refers to the Colorado revised statutes, 31, 35, 511 removed. And I feel like I could probably support this, this language.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Michelle.
I just wanted to apologize, because I didn't go into public works immediately. When we first started working on it, I didn't have as clear an understanding of how our committees work, and I feel like what that is, is the appropriate channel. So that's my mistake from the original, when this process started. But I'm glad that public works has that account to review it, and I also agree with the revised language.
Okay, Dave?
A couple things, right through it. One thing I think is why is whenever we appoint a board is that we stagger the appointments rather than having them all at once. So I would make that suggestion. It's not really clear anywhere in this that committees are open to the public and will be properly boasted, and I think that's another thing that's very important. And then, you know, one thing I've heard is that we can't delegate our responsibilities to committees. And I just want to make sure we're not violating that with this ordinance, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Bo, would you like to weigh in on that, please? Let me give you a microphone.
All right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sure we've got it, Bo.
Starting with the, the last question first, this is clearly a committee that's allowed under the statute, and it's an advisory committee. So those two things, recognizing that this is an avenue that essentially is how we have, and this is something that is advisory in nature. I would say that we're not violating, or we're not delegating at the committee level with respect to this being something that's the role of the trustees. Did that answer your question, Dave?
Yes, it did. Thanks, Bo.
So then, to the second part, I would say, you know, I would emphasize that these meetings should be public meetings, as long as there's not more than two trustees at the meeting. There's not a requirement under the open meeting sunshine law that they, that they need open to the public. I would not suggest that you put that in the board language itself, but it just be a board policy that these meetings open to the public. And then the third avenue or aspect, I'm just pulling it up right now. I thought there was one version where there were state returns. If that's not here, certainly that's something that could be amended with the second meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, anything from the public?
Yes, how many people are on the committee now? Five. Five people on the committee was a question.
None of them are from the town council. It's all, they're all public people.
One, one member would be from the board.
One of the five is a member of the board.
And one of the five are members of staff.
Yes, we have four staff.
And three community.
And one of them is a, a member of the public outside. Yeah, one membership filled by a current member of the board. One membership shall be filled by a representative in the town public works department or administrative staff, and not less than one or more than two memberships shall be members of the public. One shall be an in-town water user, one an out-of-town water user, and one authorized representative of a local water company.
I guess in general, how much authority do they have and who do they report to?
They operate as an advisory committee similar to the tree board, and so they would have their meetings and report to the board of trustees with any suggestions or any topics of discussion.
And their committee would just be listed on the agenda like all the other committees?
Yes.
And they would do, yeah, your meeting would report.
Their, the ordinance says that they would be as, as often as or once a month. Usually be deemed on, it would be at their discretion on how often they met and when they wanted to present to the board.
And it could be directed from the board to, like, a, the board line monthly meetings?
Also, the board could direct if they wanted a regular meeting, a monthly meeting, or if the semi annual power board wanted to hear from them.
Okay, the other question? Yes, Dave?
One big advantage to us is that this group is supposed to provide a regularly scheduled forum for any recipient of water from the town system to discuss specific issues. So what that will do is basically this board is a place for people to go and maybe air out anything about water. And I really like the idea that it's written in that out-of-town water users are part of that board.
Yes, Bill.
I'd like to point out a little bit, this town board has never refused a visitor to come and express opinions on any issues. So the fact that out-of-town water users or any water users to that extent are caught by, you know, the boards, these meetings are advertised and they're open to all.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah. And what determined the five, the number five? Is that just to keep it, it's just? Yeah. Thank you. Have a lot of interest, have people on the board. More people, maybe more opinions, more expertise. Well, you know, certainly, you get a board that's too large, and all you do is just wrangle that portion, you can't come get any opinions, and you don't really serve a purpose except to be a venue for people to air their issues. So having it limited to a certain number really keeps it more cohesive and effective than having a very large board. Yeah, Dave?
In this case, we might have applied the Dilbert theory of intelligence in a group, and that means that you take the number of members, multiply it by five, and subtract from 100, and that's the IQ of the group.
And the boards don't meet privately, they do meet in public.
Yep.
Other water users, it's public.
Yep, exactly. Exactly. It's just one more venue to get information from the public and to allow the public to talk to those people who are in charge of this. Anything else? Yes.
So is this something, assuming it passes, is it something you put out a call right away for application for members of interest? How about that?
Oh, it's the same as we get in the tree board. Yeah, call the letters. Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to accept ordinance 2022, be determined from first reading?
Motion to approve orders 2020 to be determined in ordinance of the board of trustees for the town of Haley, Colorado, creating an advisory water committee of the town.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carried. Next on our agenda is the public works skid, gear, skip, spear acquisition. Travis, would you like to speak to this?
Last budget season, when we were doing budget, we put in the budget for a new skid gear for the public works department. I solicited three bids from, from three skids that I'm familiar with, and these are the three bids that I got, and I was ordering it by, if I can, with the purchase.
Would you like to elaborate on what you're, what you did?
The first one is a cat wiper skid gear. They're really easy to get parts for. They're, I can get parts in Grand Junction for all three of these machines. They're really reliable. All three of them are really reliable machines. So that, that a good comparison, comparing all, these, these three are the most comparable to any of the other ones that were mentioned.
So what makes the wiper cap the top of your list?
Well, I would like to go with either the wiper or the john gear, because that's the most familiar ones that I'm with. They're, both of those have a lot more width and capacity than the box cap per se, and usability and stuff is a lot better on the, on the wiper and john gear.
Thank you, Travis. Questions? Yes, Dave?
How much did we have in the budget to purchase?
Eighty thousand.
Other questions? Yes, Dave?
Is anyone here in all three minutes?
Eight thousand.
Oh, yeah? Okay, good. I'm curious about, one of them mentioned falling object protection. Do all of them have that?
Yes.
Okay. And then heated and air-conditioned cab, I'm just thinking comfort of the operator. Do they all have that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, systemed seat, they all?
They're, they're all, one of them's got an air ride seat. I can't remember if that's a john gear or a cap, but they all got spring seats.
Okay. Just thinking employee comfort, you know, they're going to be operating it for a long time. Sometimes they'll be operating for hours, hours on end. I was thinking the safety and comfort.
Yeah.
Is there a question?
What is the expected lifespan of this machine?
All three of them got a wide range of warranty.
Yeah, but how long do you expect their lifespan to be?
I would like to see five thousand hours of a machine. I know, like, the cat and john gear, the, the new models that I've looked at, I've seen multiple of them go over five thousand hours.
Okay, and how many hours per year do you expect to operate these machines?
A lot of it depends on how much snow they get to leave. I use the skid gear a lot for building snow, plowing snow. We do a lot of alley grading with them. I would say on an average, on an average year, we try, but anywhere between 1,000 to 1,500 hours on a machine.
Okay, and then the, how many do you currently have?
I've got two right now.
And what do you expect to do with those?
I would like to get rid of them.
Okay, and?
Or get rid of at least one.
So what is the account process for lifting equipment for sale?
We have to, we bring a resolution to the board to approve to, to fair access, and then we, then we put it into the settlement. We've only ever done it one time, the auction, and just a couple of individual situations that I don't know that we actually have an actual policy on how we use that.
Well, these are pretty popular machines, even the ones that we consider no good, are often refurbished and put to good use. So I think that if you do the account, you only need to list the machine that we're going to get rid of. And I think that we should get rid of one, and list it too good to sell it.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? Yes, Michelle.
A couple of questions. For the skip stairs we have now, how many hours are on those?
One's got, I think the, the one's got 7,600 hours on it, and the other one's got a little over 12,000 hours on it.
Oh, okay. And it looks like two of the quotes have expired. Have you been in touch with Ted Keller and John Deere to make sure those are still valid?
Yes, I've talked to all three of them, and they're in a hurry.
Okay, then, do we already have all the attachments that you need for those, or would we be looking to purchase attachments soon too?
These, these quotes are just with their, with their bucket. Coming budget season, I do, I did have some money that I'd like to put in the budget for some new attachments, but these are just no attachment except for a bucket.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Dave?
Cindy, how much was posted, budgeted for this?
I just think it was 90,000.
That's, yeah, okay. So maybe there's a little, like, some room in there to buy some of those, to purchase some of those experts in the future? Would that money be able to carry over on the budget? I'm just curious, what kind of maintenance program would you have for this? And what kind of maintenance program do you have for, for all the others that you put in, all these programs?
We just go by the recommended, manufacturer recommends services interview. Why, the first service, I like to take it to the dealer to have a service, and they'll do all, they'll do oil analysis and do all everything to make sure it's good. After the first service, then we start servicing the main house.
Who on this staff would do that? Would that be you or?
I, I don't, Dominic's done what they're doing servicing now. Tim and I are probably the only two right now that are doing service.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none. Anything from the public? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion? Yes, Michelle.
Sorry, one more follow-up question. Since we did have more in the budget for this than where any of these quotes came back, if we were to include some of those accessories now rather than waiting until next budget season, is there any discount to purchase those at the same time as the primary equipment?
I'll have to ask. Most of the time, the, most of the time when I buy attachments, they're not per se a wiper brand or something. A lot of times, you'll get them at the cheapest price for, and usually you can get them cheaper from somebody that makes those implements rather than getting them, somebody sticker foot on them, then flying through like wiper or john gear.
Yeah, sure. Do we have any leftover attachments of the ones we're getting rid of that both fit all these two?
All, all of the attachments, oh, will transfer.
What's the 5,000 dollars, how many difference between the john gear and the wiper? What's the wiper about to get to? Or sometimes that cat, one's yellow, one's green.
No.
That's a cat, one's a deer.
You put cat to a little bit.
Okay. All right, we bring the motion down, or do we have more comments?
The, just listing, these are just listed at prices, not necessarily. The, just listing, these are just listed at prices, not necessarily what I would like to do. I would just like to be able to see if they'll let you demo a little bit more so I can actually run them a little longer than just their demo limit of yards and stuff before I choose exactly which one. So I would, if we can, if they're hosting, could just have a cap on purchasing one of the three.
Okay, yeah, Dave.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the public works director to spend, to purchase a skid steer not to exceed seventy thousand, seventy-two thousand seven hundred and seventy.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Okay, like just as a caution, I might, you might want to make that a little bit higher? Just rounding up the taxes?
No, just go seventy-three even.
Twenty-one thousand. I mean, if that, not again, but, and there are taxes and do I find some other thing to ask about?
Do I send eighty?
Okay, shall we then?
My colleague has suggested that requires a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the public works director to purchase skid steer not to exceed eighty thousand dollars at his discretion.
Clarissa, I thought it was point of interpretation, is that eighty to include any attachments, any extras, or is that just for the machines?
For the machine.
Oh, sorry. I mean, you're rethinking, you're second. Second. Okay, any?
I'd like to point out that just because of the budget doesn't mean it's in the check. It's very easy to say with pre-budgeted, you know, we want to check for that. It's going to come out of the fund somewhere, so I'm opposed to the seventy, to the eighty thousand. We just cap this on a lot less than that.
Well, you have the opportunity to vote, Dave, Bill.
Well, I would like to modify the motion to cap it at seven, no more than seventy-five.
Okay, so we have a second on that?
Well, second.
All right, so we're going to vote on the amended motion, which is to cap it at seven o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, so now we're voting on the main motion, which is to authorize public works director to purchase a skid steer not in excess of seventy-five thousand. Is it clear? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right, that motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Carry?
Yeah.
The first motion wasn't it, Davey? Davey modified seventy-five to the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then you're, I'm trying to get me on my toes Amanda, and I appreciate that. All right, next on the agenda is consent agenda. You have any questions or comments about consent agenda? Yes, Bill.
The request to move the event to Forest Park, what's, what are we talking about here?
So, prior to, early on in the pandemic, uh, excuse me, parade theater came forward and the board approved their license application request for the weekend in the park series to be held at the town park. And under the established executive order and direction from the health department, they have to significantly reduce the amount of people that can attend. And so their request was that they, the board approved their license to be held at a concert series that they're hosting in Phoas Park instead of the town park. It provides them the ability to limit to less than fifty attendance and keep a better, keep better handle on the event.
And how are we going to limit the people to fifty?
The park side itself limits the capacity as well. They have to, under the order, they have to use a physical barrier instead of a slide barrier, which typically is done via owner license. So they do plan to put a barrier up inside the sidewalk at the park and have a count occurring at, there's only two inches, one inch or inch of park and from the alleyway, so they can count on the people they have inside the park.
Okay, thank you. One more question. Did we, is this one of the ones that we did not charge a fee for?
They charge fees for them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, discussions? Yeah, Dave.
I just wanted to express my appreciation for the way the minutes were done, the chart showing the votes. I think that's very transparent. It's easy for the member of the public to just glance through the minutes and see if we voted on what. So I really like that improvement.
Thank you. Yep, Dave. All right, if there's no further discussion, then can I have a motion to accept consent agenda?
I'm moved to accept the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, anything from the public? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, that motion carried. All right, guys, seven fifty.
What did you read there?
Oh my God. All right, but I'm going to throw in something.
Oh.
So, I found out subsequently on meeting with L.A. Thank you, Kathy Berry, that the land use plan is going to the planning commission tomorrow, and they're going to begin discussion on the land use plan to certify it. Once it is certified, the only people who can ask for changes are the county commissioners. Because it's certified, it's a vote of the board of county commissioners, and if they do not have any changes to it, then it will be a done deal. So if we want public input onto this, we are going to have to give them something for our next board meeting, since their meeting is the day after August. And their new plan with public input in it should be sent to us tomorrow so we can have a look at it, to see what changes have been made. So I would question the board, if we want to have a special meeting to draft a proposition or an acquisition to the current plan, and make our own suggestions. And if so, when do we want to schedule that?
So much for this being an ongoing thing.
I know, yes.
We have lots of time.
Exactly. Exactly. I was very distressed when I heard that.
Were they just saying this to be all around?
I don't know. It'll be interesting to see what changes. And I'm already there. They were in the plan for one week off. But, yeah, so they're going to start their discussion. The lease is pretty sure that since they have more subdeveloped subdivisions to do on their meeting tomorrow, they're not going to get through. They're only going to start on it. Maybe they're only going to get to the point where they are looking at the procedures that they're going to look at. But our time is limited. She was fairly certain that at their first September meeting, that they would go ahead and certify the plan.
Which is the ninth or something?
What?
The day after ours, theirs is the ninth?
Yes, theirs is the ninth. We need to do a meeting on the first, probably. So we could do a second meeting on the first. Do it, you know, we could do it at five, we could do it at six thirty, we could do it whenever you guys would like to do that. So, yes, Michelle.
I'm personally in favor of starting earlier since it may take it away.
And actually, you know, if you guys want to send me your thoughts, I can try and draft something. And maybe we can work on a draft copy, and that should take less time than trying to put it together from scratch. So, does somebody like to make a motion to put this meeting for Tuesday, September first at five o'clock?
Mary, before you do that, just so that everyone is aware, I don't think it would be an issue, especially if you're drafting the draft review. I will not be able to attend that on the first, but Amanda will be here to take minutes if that's the time you choose.
Okay, yeah, and if you have any comments that you would like concluding that as well?
Right.
Please put me on.
I will.
Okay, yes, Michelle.
Just one more suggestion. Could we post publicly, maybe on social media, ask the presidents of the towns to submit their comments to us before that date as well?
And there have been tons and tons of comments already made on this, but yeah, we could go ahead and do that as well, the best I can to incorporate everything.
Okay.
All right, can we get a motion to set a special meeting on September first at five o'clock?
Let me set a special meeting on September at five o'clock, subject of the land, towns, land use.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, special meeting it is. Sorry, guys. I just hope they didn't have to do this. All right, finance and personnel.
Just a quick thing, we're getting close to the first evaluation required by the town manager, and so we hope to have something in your box, either or either. But anyway, we look in your boxes for evaluation form that we approved several meetings, but we are going to have possibly our first executive session. It's due October one. So if we have an executive session for the first meeting in September, discussing the first round, if we needed to carry it over, we could do it at the second meeting and it wouldn't be a rush. I think it's important now that Corinne gives good solid feedback, and also other those who are going through this process. And we don't just try to rush it into the last meeting of September. So the forums will be in your box. So watch for those. If you could please fill those out in advance for our first meeting in September, that'd be great. Thank you. And our meeting tomorrow with Simon Jackson is at nine fifteen tomorrow morning here at Town Hall. Anyone's invited to watch?
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, a favorite public safety?
Yeah, so we met a couple of weeks ago, and I'll just start with the food trucks listening session, since that's the biggest thing. We got a lot of good feedback at that listening session. One of the biggest takeaways, again, is a lot of people are confused about the regulations, both our, the town regulations, county, state, at all levels, of how food trucks work. So something we're going to work on is adding probably a Q and A to our town website, and we have some guidance from things that other towns are already using in Colorado, put together some, just information for people. One other good thing that came out of that meeting is that there was concern about people parking in the driveway at Old Stangrean, and the property owner has since put up signage and is keeping people from parking it. So that's great communication and progress. We did not get a lot of support for a centralized food truck location, which is something we had talked about. So I think that's probably on the back burner for now, but it's just depending on, you know, if we end up with fifty food trucks in the area, maybe something we need to revisit. Other things we discussed at the last meeting, trustee Knison had suggested that the GAC need to review the taser policy. That was actually reviewed by Mayor Bakren and Chief Ferguson, so we have taken that off of origin for GAC since the review has already been on the appropriate channels. There, we were notified that there's some graffiti adjacent to Phoas Park, and Corinne is trying to communicate with the property owner to get that plan it over, and.
He did agree. He said he would be happy if we would take it.
Okay, great. And we're going to take a look at bicycle laws in town. Some towns in Colorado have changed what they're doing in terms of bicycles and traffic, so we're going to look at that. And we're meeting again tomorrow at two P M. Following that, there is going to be a let's talk session tomorrow afternoon at four P M specific to building and building inspection intact.
So maybe we should do a let's talk on bicycles. Did I hear the let's, Corinne?
We do have a let's talk anything wheels on the list, we can schedule again.
Great. All right, public works, facilities, utility work.
Okay, we met August eighteenth, it was Travis and Corinne. We discussed a lot of ongoing projects, ongoing issues. One of them was the water restrictions and the two million gallon tank operation and being able to actually see the data and get spreadsheets on the incoming outgoing flows, especially during this drought season. We talked about the water meter status over at the junior high school. Apparently the meter, the heaven mill meter couldn't get it delivered because of the closure of Y70, so hopefully that will be delivered soon and that project can be completed. Also talked about the status of the in-town water meter replacements. We understand that about three hundred meters still need to be changed out, a hundred and fifty of those are in town. We discussed street repairs, the status of the asphalt, which I don't fully understand but the status of the town making asphalt. Hmm? We talked about the status of the sidewalk repair. They anticipate that the, uh, whoopsie, I've got my scribbles here, that, I believe the sidewalk repair will be done by the end of August?
Yeah, they should, they should be here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. And that would be on the section third and Onarga, the section that's all dissolved? Is that correct?
Yes.
We also talked about the skater, and that is in the process of being installed. It should take about two months. And we also talked about the park playground. The sandbox has been removed. There are plans for laying a concrete pad, possibly with a brick border, with bricks from Delta Brick and Climate, those beautiful red bricks made with sediment from the Pan and Reservoir. And once the bricks get delivered, that should be done. And also the covering for that, there won't be a big new table on it, and the covering is expected to be part of the twenty, requested in the 2021 budget. We also listened to a long list of wish lists for the 2021 budget from the public works department. If you want to run through them, I can, but I'm sure we'll be there and tell that later on as the budget process goes along. And we also discussed three things that Travis talked about in his report, the maintenance tree, ditch repair status, spring line status, and the bulk water, etc.
Thank you, Tim. Anything to add, though?
No, I think that trustee Max is going to pick it up somewhere.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, space to create, wanting to report, tree board.
Okay, not much to report. They are meeting Monday at four thirty P M. This coming Monday, August thirty-one, at four thirty P M at Town Park, in Park to welcome their new appointee, Jeff Thompson. And the tree board doesn't understand that there will be nothing done with the trees until the state forest service comes in and that's their thing, and we have a chance to evaluate that. So they are clear now that no trees will be cut down any time soon. So, that's it.
All right, thank you, Tim. All right, yeah.
Sorry, I missed the public works report, but I wanted to give props and thanks to Travis for coming out to fix the bump that was on second and Onarga. Has completely improved the quality of my life. Thank you so much for taking that.
Take your time. All right, if there is nothing else to do, then I say let's adjourn this meeting. Uh-oh.
Now I'm waiting for my.
Oh! Wow!
Thank you for bringing me. Talk to you tomorrow. It worked. I think it worked pretty well. Well, okay, yeah, I'm gonna try to stop.